Good evening and welcome to the City of Lowell zoning board of appeals for Monday, March 13th, 2023. A meeting will occur in person in city council chambers. You can also join the meeting from your computer tablet or smartphone as well as call in. And the meeting is available to watch online and on LTC channel 99. One housekeeping tip for folks who are in the chambers today. If you can please put your phones on stun or op vibrate or off so as not to disturb the proceedings. And if you need to have a conversation during the course of the meeting, a private conversation, please take it outside. Before we begin, before we get into the business, I would just like to briefly have a moment of silence for the passing of our chairman Van Peck's beloved wife, Davi Tran Peck, who passed away on March 1st. I know I speak for myself personally, as well as all the fellow board members, I'm sure agree that our heartfelt condolences and sympathies go out to Van and his family as well as Davi's family as well. So if we could please just have a brief moment of silence in memory of Davi. Thank you. May her soul rest in eternal peace. With that, I'd like to go on to where there's no continued business. We will move on to news, new business, ZBA 2023-8 special permit. The applicant is Jose Lizardo, property located at 1320 Middlesex Street. Jose Lizardo has applied to the Lowell zoning board of appeals to erect an internally illuminated sign at 1320 Middlesex Street. Subject property is located in Light Industrial Zoning District. The property requires special permit approval per section 6.3 for internally illuminated signage and for any other relief required under the Lowell zoning ordinance. Is the applicant present? Okay, if you can just approach the microphone. Just another housekeeping tip before we begin, Mr. Lizardo. We have a board, first of all, a voting member today, a voluntary voting member today is member Hovey. We do have four members on the board today, which means it would require a four-nothing vote for the petition, favorable vote for the petition to be passed, just to let you know that's the case. But we can go over that a little bit later on during the presentation, but I just want to make you aware of that. Okay. So if you could just state your name and address for the record and just tell us about your project, that'd be appreciated.
Hi, hi, members. Good evening. My name is Carlos. I'm representing the company who's building the sign for Jose. This is Jose, my client.
And your last name, sir? Sorry. Carlos.
Carlos Francis.
Thank you, thank you.
So we applied for the special permit is illuminated sign. It's going to be channel letters for a supermarket that is opening on this month, by the end of this month. And I think you had the measurement, the measurement for the sign is going to be two signs, two different signs. One is 15, 15, 50 feet by three feet tall. That sign is going to be divided on three signs because of the dimension, of course. And the other one is going to be 15 by three feet. That's going on the main door of the 1320 Middlesex, Essex Street, Middlesex Street.
So that's, that's all? That is it? Okay. Great. Thank you. So if there's nothing else further, I'm just going to open it up to the public for any, see if anybody wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board. The chair recognizes member Hovey. Member Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. What are the hours of operation for this supermarket, right? A grocery store?
The supermarket?
Yeah. What are the hours of operation?
The operation hour is going to be 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Okay. And the sign will only be illuminated during those hours, correct?
It probably, it can, it can do. It can be illuminated just in the, during the night hours.
Okay. So the, the sign will not be illuminated after 9:00 p.m.?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Tim. Chair recognizes member Briere. Member Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. Chair recognizes Secretary Member McCarthy. Member McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just ask about the landscaping. I know that you're here for the signage, and I know that that doesn't apply, but you had come before us a number of, maybe a year ago, maybe or so, for the permit, and you provided a landscaping plan?
Landscaping plan?
Well, you provided a plan that showed green space within the paved area. And right now, the paved area is paving the entire lot. The islands and the green space that had been set aside for landscaping is no longer set aside, it's paved over. Is that your intention to leave it that way? Or would you be following the site plan that was approved by the board?
You mean landscaping on the building?
So, so the, go ahead.
The landscaping work this month. I had to finish with the.
Speaking of the microphone, sir.
I had to finish with the city when, when the city told me about the landscaping, I do it this, this month.
Okay.
Because I don't open it yet.
Okay. I know that we can't make a condition that you follow the plan that was submitted. I just want to raise that as a concern that the plan that was submitted isn't being followed. And it sounds like you've been asked by the city to change the paved surface so that it'll comply with the site plan. Is that correct?
If I may, Chairman. Dylan and I recognized this address, and so Dylan conducted a site visit when he was reviewing the sign application, found the same thing that you did, which is that it did not comply with the landscaping plan. So then Dylan reached out to the owner, and it sounds like they do plan to remedy it. But the approved plan includes like landscaped islands and a lot of street trees. So we are very determined to see that the site complies with the landscaping plan. Yeah.
I'm so happy to hear that.
Yes.
Thank you. Because I was a little worried, and I couldn't resist, even though you're here for a totally different special permit tonight, I couldn't resist asking. But I'm glad to see that you're going to be providing landscaping as originally expected by the site plan that was submitted. And the hours of illumination are going to be no later than 9:00 p.m. for the sign? Is that correct?
No, it's going to be illuminated like during the night hours.
Okay, so.
Even when the supermarket is closed.
So we typically, I think, as a condition, say no later than one hour after closing as a condition for illuminated signs? So it won't be beyond 10 o'clock then? And that'll be the condition that we'll place on this application? So the signage will have to be shut off at 10:00 p.m.?
By 10:00 p.m.?
If that's okay with the rest of my board members? Okay. Very good. And it looks great. I'm so glad there's a supermarket going in in that location. I happen to live on Foster Street, and so it'll be very convenient for me. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, so your other wishes of the board? You have the supermarket, the business over on Bridge Street as well, correct? Yeah. So is this a moving operations or is this a second location?
A second one.
Okay. That's, that's, that's great to hear because it's, it's great to hear that, you know, you established a business here in the city of Lowell, and things are going very well for you enough that you can even open up a second location in another part of the city. So that's, and you, you're staying in, in the city and in the community, which is, it's a testament to, you know, how awesome, how great your business is doing, and I'm sure it's going to be very well for you and your family. So as long as, you know, if you're in approval with the conditions that the illumination, it's one hour after close of business, we try to keep that flexibility in case you change hours sometimes or something comes up. But right now, you say it would be at 10 o'clock, but I mean, I think the more thing is if you, if, things are still going so well that you got to stay open a little later, just reach out to DPD and just make sure that we're, everything's in compliance with that so we know that, you know, everything's staying on. But, but congratulations on, you know, the success of your business and moving on this. And I would be in favor of, of this petition along with the conditions, as long as you're in agreement with that. So if anybody, if anybody has anything further, Dennis? Okay. Okay. With that, may I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-8 for special permit at 1320 Middlesex Street for illuminated signage with the condition that the hours of illumination be from 7:00 a.m. to one hour after closing or 10:00 p.m., whichever is later.
Second.
Motion by the Clerk, Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Briere. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Callahan?
Approval condition.
Member McCarthy?
Approval condition.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Hovey?
Approve.
All right. So you've been approved with conditions. I wish you the best of luck with your new project and continued success with the business.
Thank you very much.
Great. Have a great day. Okay. Moving forward, under other business, we have an administrative review for 17 Montreal Street, 264, 266 Plain Street. Administrative review for compliance with the special permit that was approved by the board on September 27th, 2022, and compliance with outstanding conditions for, of approval. So I know we got comments from the board. Fran, there was several pictures. Does DPD, I mean, do you have anything else to report other than what the?
Yeah, I mean, I can just briefly walk through.
Sure.
The comment memo. So this application was approved in August of 2021. It was approved with a number of conditions. And so Dylan just points out a few issues with the application. The first being that we did not receive a change of use permit application from the applicant. Change of use permits are required whenever a site is changing use or a use is being established at a site so that the city can keep track of what types of uses are where. So we did not receive that. They did obtain a paving permit from the engineering department, but the problem with not applying for a change of use permit is that when we receive a building permit, we screen it for zoning and make sure that all of the conditions of approval are met. That's our mechanism for checking for the approved with conditions, those special conditions. So there was no way for us to check to make sure that they complied with all of these conditions. So Dylan visited the site. It looks okay from the outside, but we did not receive recorded copies of the zoning ward decision, and the decision actually only becomes valid when it's recorded at the registry of deeds. So it only goes into effect when it's recorded. Before it's recorded, it, it hasn't really happened. So that's an issue. Another problem is that it's not clear whether oil separators were installed, which was a condition of approval. They did not submit a landscaping plan demonstrating the site meets the landscaping requirements, which is another condition of approval. The board should confirm hours of operation for the site. The extent of paving appears to differ from the approved plans. Either the applicant extended paving beyond the originally approved plans or vehicles are being stored on a pervious surface, which is not allowed. Per condition one, it appears the curb cut has been constructed on Plain Street. However, the primary access to the site appears to be off of Quebec Street. The board should determine when or how the applicant intends to meet this condition of approval. Yeah, that was condition of approval number one, was that the access to the site, primary access, was supposed to be off of Plain Street. And in conclusion, an as-built plan would confirm whether the parking area meets the conditions of approval, including the oil separators. So that's just a walkthrough of the comments.
Okay. This is, this administrative review was something that we conditioned at the last, when we approved this, correct?
Correct.
So that's why, that's why it's on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. If I recall, if I'm not mistaken, I believe Attorney Cox represented the applicant at the.
He did, but I believe that he's no longer representing this applicant. I'm not sure if anyone.
Is anybody on Zoom?
We have two people online, so maybe one of them is on behalf of the applicant.
Okay. So.
They were notified of this meeting.
Okay.
If they're not here, then we can just move forward with, we have obviously mechanisms for enforcement, but through our board enforcement agent. So that's what we would be looking to do next.
And my understanding, administrative reviews are not public, not public, public hearing. We don't open up to the public. It's more of just to get an idea from the applicant of what, where, how, how things are going with the.
Correct.
So that being said, is there anybody on Zoom? There's no one present in the, in the chambers other than the members and, and Mrs. Sigliano. So there's no members from the public or anybody else here? Is anybody on Zoom with regards to 17 Montreal Street, 264, 266 Plain Street that wishes to give us an update of what's going on? Oh, oh, Fran. Okay. So it doesn't appear there's anybody here from the applicant. There's nobody else in the chambers right now. So what would be the wishes of the board with regards to this administrative review? Anybody? Dennis?
I would like to see us continue the administrative review out a number of months to see if we can get some resolution. This is very disappointing that the applicant hasn't taken this process seriously, especially the access off of Plain Street to, to, that's the most important part of the condition that, my goodness. And then the gas and oil separators, we don't even know if that's, anyway, I, I think that we should maybe ask for a continuance to this administrative review out maybe another three months? Give them until Mayor June to rectify the situation? That's a thought?
I probably would agree with that, I think, more in lines of, I guess, A, I'm thinking, well, have you confirmed with Attorney Cox that he's no longer representing him or it's just we haven't heard from him?
We just know that he's not represented by this person.
Okay. Oh, so they are represented, they're represented by another, another council?
Yes. But I don't know where that person is. And again, I, where I have a little bit of fuzziness that I need to figure out is, I don't know that the board can retroactively do anything. Like, I, I think the mechanism that we have is through our board enforcement agent that we can have, fine this person, this property owner up to $300 a day per violation. So that's actually, I mean, you can really whack them with a lot of fines. That is the mechanism that the city has. So my thought is that we move to do that.
Can I ask a question?
Immediately. Go ahead.
So the owner has been notified of, of these non-compliance? How long ago were they notified?
Immediately before this was scheduled for administrative review. That's why it was scheduled for administrative reviews, because staff drove by and saw that they weren't meeting the.
So roughly, when were they notified?
Three weeks ago, maybe?
Have they reached out to you with?
Not.
So I, I, I can empathize a little bit, right? Give them some time. I think giving them three months is way too much time. They, they knew the conditions going into this. They didn't abide by the conditions, and that was, I mean, that's purposely. I mean, they know the conditions, right? And they didn't abide by them. They've been notified three weeks ago, and they haven't had any contact with you. I think we start the process now. If we start letting, you know, three to six months go by, then we're going to have a stack up of administrative reviews and, and issues to deal with at some point. So it would be of my opinion that, that we start the process now to enforce what we've, we laid out conditions, they ignored conditions. What's going to stop the next person from ignoring conditions? All the next person is, you know? So I think we have, there has to be some repercussions to, to not living up to the conditions they agreed to. They agreed to them. They spelled out every meeting, every time we approve something. If you can't, I mean, this wasn't just a rehab or a rebuild. This was a big project, and I don't think that they put the effort into living up to their expectations. We lay them out, they agree to them, and then they don't do them and, and kind of hope that the enforcement isn't there. I think there has to be some teeth with what we do. Just my opinion.
Thank you, Tim. Mark, do you have any comment? Dennis?
I think, in my mind at least, the intent of the administrative review on this particular application was to review how the access to the site's going, how the sight line's going, how the noise is going, how the, you know, I thought it was more to understand if that's impacting the neighborhood, because there was a lot of concern with the neighbors, I thought, at the hearing, that this parking area for storage of cars could impact the neighbors across the street especially.
Yep.
And now that the access hasn't even started off of Plain Street, we don't know how the, so, so I agree the conditions that are on the city side to, on the city enforcement side to enforce with the gas and oil separator, the landscape plan, the pavement matching the site plan, those are things that are not our role as the board, but the condition for the six-month administrative review regarding the access and how it impacts the neighborhood, I think, was what the, our administrative review piece was supposed to be doing.
Gotcha.
So until we have that access straightened out, our administrative review isn't really understanding if that access off of Plain Street solves the neighbor, neighborhood traffic conditions or concerns with the vehicles parked there.
Thank you, Dennis. I think, I think the continuance of this nature is probably best for the board for the administrative review. Allow DPD to, I think, A, try to reach out to the applicant's new council. Again, I'm surprised that they're represented by a, you know, follow-up council, and there's been no communication. Not, not, I'm going to presume DPD's reached out, but they're not communicating with us, which I find very strange, especially a project of this magnitude. I don't think, if they're going to hire subsequent council to assist them in this, that they would probably still try to stay within communication with the city on this project as well as, I think, Fran, you said you haven't received a copy of the stamp, the, the recorded special permit with the?
Correct.
Okay. Have you guys made, has anybody made an attempt to go online to the registry of deeds website and see if it's?
I believe Dylan did.
Ordered there?
I can double check, though.
All right. If you can just double check that, just to make sure, maybe, I can, I know they're supposed to send it to you, but I'm, who knows? I mean, these things today, things get lost in the mail or whatnot, but I am a little concerned about the lack, what it sounds like, a lack of communication from the applicant and their council on this. And I would think that DPD being, you know, heading out and starting to enforce with more enforcement, regular part of it, hopefully will get somebody's attention, especially when they start getting bills for $300 a day, then, yeah.
Per violation, so there's multiple violations. That's potentially, that's thousands per day.
Yeah.
Thousands per week. So that will certainly get their attention.
I think that would be best, that at least gets somebody's attention, and at some point, someone's going to reach out. So, so I would be, I would certainly, I would also be in agreement on this. I'm not sure what the wishes of the board, how much time we want to give them. We're at six months now. Fran, any recommendations of what do you think that we could, we should probably?
I think a three-month check-in, to your point, administrative review, not on compliance with conditions of approval, but on whether we are receiving complaints about noisiness or, yeah, due to the access being on, on Plain Street or like the traffic, any traffic issues. I think three months makes sense. In terms of meetings, three months from now is June, so we have June 12th, June 26th.
And then we only have the one meeting in July and August, right?
And then, yeah, July 24th.
Whatever the wishes of the board, I'll go with any, whatever, whatever else thinks. So June, July?
I think by June, we should have this thing moving and. I think by June, we should have this thing moving, and...
Yeah.
Where the curb cut exists on Plain Street, I think that the gate should be closed, and we should have that resolved. I mean, if this is met with opposition by the neighborhood, then we would be, I think, able to provide additional, additional conditions to the application. And that's the point of the administrative review. If this is not solving it with the, with the conditions we placed, maybe there's fewer cars, maybe there's a taller gate, maybe there's something. But I think June 12th would be a reasonable timeframe, in my opinion.
Okay.
Okay, so June 24th, you said is the last, the second meeting? Want to do that?
June 26th.
June 26th?
So, for my clarification, this would just be on the access?
Yes.
Would we still move in for, forward in enforcement on the other conditions that are met?
Yes, this would be separate from enforcement issues of conditions of approval. This would be, have we received complaints about traffic? Have we received complaints from neighbors?
Sure, I'm familiar with the Quebec and Plain Street area.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that portion being pushed out, but I think the other portions were purposely not met, and there's an issue with that.
The hope being, I guess, if we get to June 24th, by that time with DPD starting enforcement proceedings, that someone's, it's going to get to someone's attention. And then we, if we need to discuss it then, we'll discuss it then, and you can let them... At that time, hopefully, if we have to discuss it then, or they'll be, oh, sorry, oops, we dropped the ball, we're back in compliance, or we're not. And if we need to discuss it then, we'll discuss it then.
Also, the applicant agreed at the time that this was voted on to the administrative review. So, if an applicant refuses to participate in an administrative review, then that can be interpreted as not being compliant with the condition of approval. So, that's sort of part of, that was part of the agreement when the special permit was voted on.
And then, I guess, we'll have another discussion if they had recorded the special permit or something at that point. Well, the special permit would no longer be in effect legally, because if they didn't comply with the conditions, then it's, it's now, it would be invalided. Be invalided. So, then, there's plenty else to discuss at that point. But I think, if we continue this and then allow DPD the opportunity to proceed with enforcement, then we can discuss all the other stuff at the next meeting. So, can I please have a motion to continue the matter to June 26, 2023?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue the administrative review at 17 Montreal Street and 264, 266 Plain Street, to be continued to June 26th. Thank you.
Second.
Motion by the Clerk, Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Hovey. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Callahan.
Continue administrative review to June 26, 2023.
Member McCarthy.
Continue administrative review to June 26th.
Member Brier.
Continuance.
Member Hovey.
Continue.
Okay, that matter's been continued. Next item we have on the agenda is executive session to discuss open outstanding litigation for 228 First Street. The Board is, we are only four members, not a full Board today. I believe this matter was suggested by Chairman Peck to come before executive session. He's not probably, I think we're just going to table the executive session at this point until the, all the full members of the Board are available. If that's in agreement with everybody else, I don't think we need a chair, I don't think we need a roll call with that, so. No objection? Okay. So, we'll table the executive session to a future meeting. And notice will be, it'll be placed in a notice for that meeting. Next item on the agenda, we have minutes for approval for February 27, 2023. Do I have any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, can I please have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 27, 2023.
Motion to approve meeting minutes for February 27, 2023 by the Clerk, Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Brier. Roll call, please.
Chairman Callahan.
Approved meeting minutes for February 27, 2023.
Member McCarthy.
Approved the meeting minutes for February 27.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
All right, meeting minutes have been approved. Anybody have any other comments, questions, concerns?
Actually do.
Ms. Segliano.
So, I wanted to just note that the ZBA is able to petition the council to recommend zoning changes, in light of our conversation earlier, myself and Member McCarthy. So, if the Board, it could be about any zoning-related thing, but particularly internally illuminated signs, the Board tends to grant them routinely and have routine conditions. So, I would think about just codifying that condition of approval. And I think pretty much all the other aspects of internally illuminated signage, like illumination, brightness, that is regulated in the code already. Prohibiting flashing signs, that's in the code already. So, it might just be more efficient to codify the, and spell out what we think is appropriate for internally illuminated signs, and not review them on a case-by-case basis anymore, because it takes hours of staff time to process the applications and the resulting decisions. It takes up applicant's time coming out here, your time. So, I think that it's a good idea to think about asking the council to approve that.
Thank you, Fran. Dennis?
I'd like to just ask, if I could maybe draft a revision to the code regarding illuminated signs to submit to my fellow Board members at the next meeting, and maybe we could review it and vote on it next meeting.
Yeah.
I was going to suggest, and I recall, there's been discussion about this from DPD, going back many, many, many years, I believe. Director McCall, at some point when she was, she, when she was there, she was saying, at some point they were going to, DPD was going to come up with something to codify.
Read you the signed code?
Codify like what, what DPD's suggestion would be as far as the signage, the signage, about, as far as signage, illuminated signage. And I think that might be helpful if we get DPD's input first as to something we could recommend to the, to the city, and then we can circulate that and then discuss it. Even, and then if we have to go to a point of proposed, possible proposed...
Or maybe I could just submit something to you, Fran, to circulate next week, and you could have a response back at the meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that since you brought it up, I think you bringing a draft of some changes is completely fine, and then maybe, then you can submit it to me. I can take a look and see what I think, and whether there's any other changes I think we should make. And then we can schedule it for discussion at a meeting. And then, once we finalize the changes, I can write up a cover letter and get that moving through the...
That'll go to the City Council?
City Government, yeah.
What would that have, I mean, well, you know, we've got to go to the other departments first, and then eventually do the City Council for their...
Yes, so basically, it starts... It is scheduled as a petition, I believe. If it comes from city staff, it's informational, but technically, this would be coming from the zoning board. So, I believe it starts as a petition to the City Council. The City Council refers to the Law Department, which reviews whether it's legal or not, and sort of gives us the green light, goes back to the council. Then it gets referred to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board weighs in on it. And then it gets referred back to the council, and then the council...
I think the council has a zoning subcommittee as well, that they...
They do have a zoning subcommittee, but sometimes if it's less of a complicated issue, they will just accept, they will sort of defer to the Planning Board, because the Planning Board is more in the weeds with zoning. So, for something like this, I don't think it would be referred to a zoning subcommittee meeting. It could be, but I doubt it, because it's such a small change. But for other things, like housing change, housing policy changes, like they tend to schedule them for the zoning subcommittee. So, I don't think that they would for this, but it's possible. But I think it would save a lot of time, and therefore taxpayers' money. So, I think it's in the council's best interest to entertain it. So, I think that's a really good idea.
Agreed. I think, you know, the sign, the internally illuminated signage thing has been brought up several times. And to your point, yes, I mean, if we could button it up a lot more and try to possibly save citizens or businesses, mostly business, it's mostly the businesses that have to come in for the special permit for the approval of illuminated signage. And it takes a lot of time and effort, which I think might be better used if we can codify that in the, in the code, so. But, sounds good to me. Dennis?
And I just want to say, I think from my standpoint, if we can just state something to the effect of the illuminated sign is a static sign, and the hours of illumination are something, as we typically grant, from hours of opening to hour after closing, something of that nature that we put in the zoning would be where I'd like to go with this, which is something that I think we typically, as a Board, grant approval on in my, in my tenure here.
And this is a supplement application just specifically for signs, right, Fran?
Yes, so when, so for other signs, for example, externally illuminated signs that have a, instead of being illuminated internally, they have a light bulb on the outside shining on them. For some reason, we don't require a special permit for those. So, how that works, it's the same as a building permit, it's just a type of a building permit. So, we process it like a building permit. We review whether it complies with zoning or not. If it doesn't comply with zoning, we notify them if they, and let them know that they can change it to make it compliant with zoning, or if they wanted to, they could ask for a variance from the sign code, which some, I know Market Basket did that, to have an oversized monument sign in Pataqueville. Doesn't happen that often. Usually, people will just modify it so they don't need to come before the Board. But for any internally illuminated sign, we just require a special permit. So, we have been sending them here for my entire time here, and I think for decades we have been doing this, but...
Yeah, I'm looking at the one we did today. Actually, there is a special permit that's just specifically for signs that the applicant has to fill out. But I do note that it doesn't put on there hours of, you know, proposed hours of illumination or hours of the business. I think that's something, if we get this rolling, then we'll have to update the application and stuff.
Yes.
That would be, you know, good for you guys, because if it's something that, if it would, if it, if it gets passed and codified and fits within zoning, then you don't have to, it doesn't have to come before the Board, as long as you got all the information in front of you, including hours proposed, hours of illumination and stuff, then DPD can just deal with it, so.
Yes.
Great, no, that's a good idea. I wholeheartedly in support, support of that, so. Okay. With that being said, anybody, any of you have further comments, questions, concerns? Just want to wish everyone a very happy St. Patrick's Day, along with the Irish and the Irish-Americans who have, you know, so. With that, unless anybody else has anything else, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, a motion to adjourn, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. Motion to adjourn by the Secretary, Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Hovey. Meeting is adjourned. Oh, I'll say aye, sorry. Aye, savant.